Good evening. The clock at City Hall reading seven o'clock. We'll call to order the Tuilla City Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, July 23rd, 2025. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. If you all please rise and say the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have our rule call. Commissioner Gossett.
Here.
Commissioner Proctor.
Here.
Commissioner Sloan.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Jensen.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
I'm Commissioner Robinson. I too am here. We excuse Commissioners Hammer and Dunn. Recognize Ms. Fairborn, Mr. Hanson, Ms. Manzio. And now I forgot your name, Matt. Johnson, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Agard. Sorry.
Forgot your name, Matt.
Yeah, I forgot your name, Matt. Oh goodness. Happy blind year day it is.
That's alcohol.
And also Councilmember Hanson, welcome. Next on the agenda, public hearing and recommendation on a proposed general plan text amendment request by the city to adopt a water use and preservation element and add sud element to the Tuilla City General Plan. Mr. Agard.
Thank you, Commissioners. So we are proposing a new element to our general plan. The general plan is composed of many different elements. We have a land use element, an annexation element, transportation element, and all of them are plans and of themselves, all kind of grouped together into one general plan. This is a new plan. It involves how the city uses water and how water impacts development and how we can conserve water. Why are we adding this to our general plan? Well, namely because the state of Utah says so. And it's a good thing. It's not a bad thing. It's something that we really need to have in our plan and be mindful of how we can preserve water and more wisely use our water. But it is required by state code 10-9A-403 and 17-27A-403. And we have until December 31st of 2025 to get this adopted. So I wanted to make sure we get this to you in plenty of time. What does the state want us to include in this element? Quite a bit. Number one, the effect of permitted development on water demand and water infrastructure. Number two, the methods of reducing water demand for existing development. And number three, the methods for reducing water demand for future development. Number four, active consultation with public water system serving the community with drinking water regarding water supply planning, drinking water sources, storage capacity, distribution planning, master plans, and replacement plans. Number five, modifications that can be made to local government operations to reduce and eliminate wasteful water practices. And number six, consultation with other agencies such as the Division of Water Resources, the Division of Drinking Water, the Department of Agriculture and Food, Utah Water Savers, and others. The good news is, much of this work has already been done and is already included into Tuilla City's existing water conservation plan. So thank you to those who put together the water conservation plant. It made my job a little bit easier in putting together this element. And Tuilla City is doing a good job in regards to what the state has required. Staff's objectives in regards to this element. Number one, to comply with state law. Number two, to provide an easy-to-read and understand document. And number three, keep the document short and simple. I'm all about brevity. I like to have documents that are easy to read and convey the message quickly. Our element is only six pages and I believe does that. So I've thrown together just a few excerpts from the plan, just so the, from the element for the commission's reference. It does include an introduction, which explains why we have an element and what the element does and what its purpose is. It includes a current conditions of the city's water system and water conservation efforts, including educational practices, training practices, and things that we are doing to help conserve water. It also includes information on rebates, incentives, and rewards. It includes a list of the ordinances that the city currently utilizes to conserve water. You may recall, about a year or so ago, we went through a significant ordinance amendment where we put in place a lot of ordinances that prohibited the use of sod in places like park strips and parking lots and so forth, in an effort to reduce the water used on thirsty sod. This element includes all of those ordinances and standards. Again, it includes education and training practices. The Public Works Director often will visit elementary schools and will teach children and so forth about the necessity to conserve water. Rebates and incentives and rewards. We currently employ the Flip Your Strip program offered by Utah Water Savers. If you replace the turf grass in your park strip with drought tolerant type landscaping, you can be, you can qualify for financial assistance and so forth. And then the city also has a water pricing tiered system where the more water you use, the more you pay. This is actually in place to try and keep people from using too much water because the more they use, the more money they're going to have to work out. It discusses improvements to the physical system in regards to the maintenance of our water system and the types of pipes and valves that are used. It also refers to some of the valves and improvements that the Parks Department uses in regards to their water systems for public properties. And then it also includes a list of consultation. So you can refer to the element for various agencies, both through the state, through the county, through the city, in regards to finding tips and information on how to conserve water. So staff's confident that the water use and preservation element as currently drafted and included in your packet will satisfy the state requirements in regards to what we need to have in our, in our general plan. So this item is a public hearing. I did issue notices, general notices, and it's here for your recommendation for the city council. If you have anything you'd like to add to it or anything I may have missed, feel free to voice those. And if not, then I'd happen to answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Andrew. Like you mentioned, it was nice that so many things could be just pulled from our current existing documents.
Yes, it was.
Plug and play with this. Any questions, comments, concerns from the commission for staff on this plan?
I've got a couple of nitpicks, if that's helpful.
Pick away. Commissioner Sloan.
And there are going to be questions more than nitpicks. I don't know exactly what the, what the legislation is requiring. I was beyond what you said, which FYI, I love everything that's done here. But I've got an issue with the language on one, and then I need to answer a question on another one. But in paragraph two of the introduction that starts water as a critical component.
Okay.
On the second line, well, it starts on the first line. Unlike cities situated along the Wasatch Front, Tuilla City does not have an independent water district operating large water pipeline. I think it needs to either read Water District Operating A Large Water Pipeline or Water District Operating Large Water Pipelines, plural.
Okay.
Neither of those makes sense.
They do.
Does anybody get?
So noted.
Stupid. Well, separate question. The second one is more substantive in nature and it goes down to improvements to the physical system. I'm a bylaws geek. And when I look at, I look at our general plan as our bylaws. And you try and set them and not forget them, but set them up so that you don't have to go back in and play with them very often. Is that fair? When we get to this section, I wonder if it makes sense for us to stop, what is it, one, two, third bullet point. Tuilla City is actively utilizing enhancing advanced metering technology with the aim of transitioning all users to radio technology within the next five years. If we stop right there, then we have not added the specific software that you're using. If for some reason next year you do something different than Unipro, you're still in compliance, but we don't have to crack anything open to change it. And the same basic idea with the last bullet. Tuilla City is actively replacing all existing irrigation controls with Hunter Waterwise irrigation. Could we not just change Hunter Waterwise to whatever?
Just Waterwise valve system?
If Waterwise is not a trademark product of this, but you follow where I'm going, where you don't have to, you can still be saying, hey, residents and everybody, we're using the best technology available, but I'm not locked to Hunter. I'm not locked to Union or whatever. And maybe that's too much of a minutia.
No, I appreciate that. That makes perfect sense to me, and that's an easy, easy change. No problem.
That's pretty much what I answered.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And actually, one other question along those lines. Are we going to lock ourselves into this base fee for, for that in the general plan? Or should we just say that we use that kind of pricing structure?
So perhaps remove the, the structure that it's in there and just regard, and have language in there about the tiered water pricing system?
Graduated or tiered use systems see the city website for current rate or whatever that is.
A link to the code.
Because that's, that's almost like a policies and procedures versus a bylaws.
Gotcha.
You can leave the descriptions in there. Just remove the actual fees. Because the descriptions of the fees are written well.
Okay, excellent.
Where they can find those fees, that would be perfect, too, because those could change.
Yeah, those, those all, those comments all have merits, and I'm happy to, happy to adjust it accordingly.
I love the work in general. I think it's great. I love any policies that are six pages.
No, that's excellent. I can do that. When you, when you make your recommendation, if you could include that in your recommendation, just a reference to those comments, that'd be great. Any other questions for staff? If not, this item does indeed require a public hearing. If there's anyone that is here that would like to step forward and address this item, the public hearing is now open. And presto, chango, the public hearing is now closed. We'll bring it back to the commission for any further question, discussion, or entertain a motion on a recommendation.
You're always going to make me make the motion, so I have to do better stuff, aren't you?
Yes.
It's good to have friends. Mr. Chairman, I move forward a positive recommendation to the city council for the Tuilla City General Plan text amendment for the purpose of adopting a water use and preservation element, including in the, including it in the current Tuilla City General Plan, based on the findings discussed in this meeting and included in the staff report dated July 15th, 2025, including the following changes. That line two, a paragraph two of the introductions section, that the, that the word "A" be put in between the word "operating" and "large water pipeline." Is that clear enough for you to figure out when you're typing all this up? And secondly, to exclude the lines in the improvements to the physical system, to exclude the lines that include everything after, I'm sorry, starting with at present. Tuilla City utilizes Unipro software. Everything from that point to the end of that paragraph to be excluded. And finally, in the last bullet point, in the same, in the same section, to exclude the word Hunter. And Mr. Agard, you can decide whether Waterwise is appropriate, but, but the term Hunter for a specific vendor. And that would be my motion.
Don't we have to add the dollar amounts?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I apologize. And also the actual amounts of the water fees excluded. That the tiers and the water line sizes be included to show where those tiers are, but the price per unit be excluded.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Sloan, seconded by Commissioner Anderson, is there discussion on the motion?
Someone can read that back, verbatim?
All the arms and does, yes.
That's why she's here.
No, he meant no.
Four minutes discussion in two weeks, going to be fine.
We'll take this to a vote. Commissioner Gossett.
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan.
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Chair also votes aye. That moves forward with a positive recommendation, seven to zero. Next on the agenda, a proposed zoning map amendment request by Ronald Hall to reassign portions of a .81 acre property located about 600 South Canyon Road from the MU 160 to the R1-7. Mr. Agard.
Thank you, Chairman Robinson. This is a fairly interesting and simple zoning map amendment, but nevertheless, one that we need to accomplish. It involves the oddly configured property located just south of Main Street and west of Canyon Road. It rests immediately south of the Baptist Church that sits a little bit elevated over the highway. The city's water, one of the city's water reservoirs is located to the southeast of the property. The property, excuse me, I had the wrong slide there. The property currently bears two zoning districts. The area shaded in brown is R1-7, and then the area shaded in kind of the turquoise green is, is MU 160. And I don't know exactly how this ended up the way it did. I know that the applicant did a series of lot line adjustments a few years back and acquired some property and also released some property, but the zoning map no longer reflects the actual boundaries of the property. The applicant wants to do a subdivision on the property and convert the lot into four single-family residential lots. I believe I included that plan in your packet. The property is currently designated under the general plan as MDR, medium density residential, which is a land use designation that requires the R1-7, R1-8, and R1-10 zoning districts. The applicant is requesting the zoning map amendment occur so that the entire property can be zoned R1-7 to facilitate the subdivision of his property. So basically, what that means is the area highlighted in red would be reassigned to the R1-7 zone. The zoning is in compliance with the general plan. Just for your information, the differences between the MU 160 and the R1-7 zone. The MU 160 zone is a holding zone for areas where development is challenging due to slope, drainages, and other geological considerations. And it permits single-family residential homes on 160 acre lots. So you could have one home per 160 acres. That's a big lot. It does permit agriculture and livestock production, and it does prohibit commercial uses. The R1-7 zone, as you know, is the most common zoning district in Tuilla City. Permit single-family residential and two-family residential dwellings, prohibits commercial uses other than those permitted as home occupations, and prohibits the keeping of animals other than household pets, chickens, ducks, and rabbits. So those are the differences between the two zones. It's fairly, fairly stark. I should also note that there is a sensitive area overlay that rests over the property. That does not prohibit development, but it does have some additional standards for development in regards to slope, cut and fill, other things like that. That really has no bearing on the zoning as it, as it stands. It's just something that we deal with when they come in to do subdivision development. So when he does his subdivision, we'll, we'll apply the, the sensitive area overlay at that time. So this item does require a public hearing. I sent out notices to the, the property owners within 200 feet. I have not received any comments or concerns from anyone in that noticing radius up until now. So if you have any questions, be happy to answer those for you.
Thank you, Andrew. Any questions for staff from the commission on this item? If not, we will go ahead and open up the public hearing for this zoning map amendment. If there's anyone from the public that would like to come forward, now is the time. Please come forward. And is there a thing there you can put your name and?
Sure.
Information there, please?
My name is Chris Erickson. I own a home on Canyon Road, just a little bit north of that. I'm the last home on Canyon Road. And the question I have on that is, I'm just concerned about the access. And I may be too premature on this question, because I don't know if it's been approved for that residential housing development yet. But I am concerned about Canyon Road. I don't know if any, any of you are familiar with it. It's a fairly small road. It's teeny. And then my, my road, which there's three houses on, that kind of loops back around, is a dirt road. That's kind of a private driveway that houses three homes. And I'm just concerned that that Canyon Road being so small, is that going to be accessed from Canyon Road? Or is the access going to be done from Main Street from that? Because I'm just concerned that that road's pretty small. It's pretty hard to maneuver up that road to my home, things like that. So that's kind of my concern there. So, but as far as, and like I said, I could be premature on this, but, because I know that that's part of the, the develop, whatever they're developing there. As far as the zoning, I don't really have much to say about that. I think it's fine to get more in general. But as far as, like, I'm just more concerned about changing that and then having that limited access on that, on Canyon Road itself. So, does that make sense?
That does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to come forward? If not, we will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for any further questions, discussion, or a motion.
Do we want to have Andrew come up and explain at what point in the process those questions can be addressed?
It couldn't hurt. It couldn't hurt. If you don't mind doing that, Mr. Agard.
I don't mind at all. So in regards to access and what the effect of it will have on Canyon Road, that will happen, we will address that during the subdivision process, whether it be a preliminary subdivision or, or final plat. I can tell you that the proposed plans show only two lots accessing Canyon Road. The other two lots are proposed to access SR 36 through that private easement that the city currently has to access the Wigwam. But we will address road improvements and other things during the subdivision process as it, as it comes in with an application.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll make a motion for you.
Commissioner Proctor, please.
I move forward a positive recommendation to the city council for the Hall's, Hall zoning map amendment request by Ronald Hall to reassign property located approximately 600 South Canyon Road from MU 160 Multiple Use Zone District to the R1-7 Residential Zoning District, application number 2025061, based on the findings listed in the staff report, dated, dated July 16th, 2025.
There's a motion for a positive recommendation by Commissioner Proctor. The chair will second that. Any discussion on that motion? If not, we'll take it to a vote. Commissioner Gossett.
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan.
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Chair also votes aye. That moves forward with a positive recommendation to the city council, seven to zero. Next, a decision on a preliminary subdivision plan request for the Microtel Hotel subdivision located at 470 East, 2300 North on 2.05 acres. Mr. Agard.
Thank you, Commissioners. You've probably seen the hotel that is nearing final construction. That is, they're on the north side of the city. It is located in the property highlighted in red, sandwiched between 470 East and 540 East and south of 2400 North. Property is currently zoned industrial service, as are all of these surrounding properties. This is a one-lot subdivision. Basically, the applicant is taking an existing parcel of record and turning it into a platted subdivision lot. The reason why they's doing that is because there is a need for road dedication. If you see on the southwest corner of the, of the subdivision, there is a small portion of the road that is going to be dedicated. There was also an existing turnaround easement. You can kind of see the outline of it there on the east side. That is no longer available for turnaround. They have installed a cul-de-sac south of the road dedication that has been installed. It is in place. So basically, this plat is to, number one, plat the lot. Number two, dedicate that roadway. The improvements, I believe, have already been installed. So the applicant's playing catch-up so he can get everything done before he wants occupancy on the building. So that's, that's the purpose of the subdivision plat, what we're asking for. We're recommending approval with the basic conditions listed in your report. If you have any questions, happy to answer for you.
Thank you, Andrew. Any questions, concerns from the commission on this agenda item? This one does not require a public hearing. That's up to us to approve it. So if there's no questions, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Jensen, please.
I move we approve the preliminary subdivision plan request by Leo Mantis, representing WLG LLC for the Micro Motel Hotel subdivision, application number P 23-619, based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report dated July 17th, 2025.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Jensen, seconded by Commissioner Proctor. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll take this one to a vote. Commissioner Gossett.
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan.
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Chair also votes aye. That subdivision plan, preliminary subdivision plan is approved, seven to zero. Next, a similar item, a decision on a preliminary subdivision plan request by the Tuilla County School District for the Deseret Peak High School subdivision located at 2244 North Barra Boulevard. Mr. Agard.
First of all, I think it's pretty cool that we have actually two one-lot subdivisions on the same agenda. I don't know why. I just think that's, they're, they're very rare, and here they are on the same agenda. I just, and both of them have pretty much the same purpose.
Same issue.
Just interesting to me. So you're all familiar with the Deseret Peak High School property. It's the highlight, the 52 acre parcel highlighted in red. This is an existing parcel of record, which means it's not platted. The property currently bears two zoning districts, the GC General Commercial on the east and the RR5 on the west. And in similar fashion to the previous application, the application proposes to take this the RR5 on the west. And in similar fashion to the previous application, the application proposes to take this existing parcel of record and create a platted subdivision lot. The subdivision is a preliminary plan in order to facilitate the road dedication. You'll note that on the plan, the area shaded in gray on the east side and the north side, north being to the left, those are the portions of 2400 North and Barra Boulevard that will be dedicated to Tuilla City as a public right-of-way. I do know the school district is currently working to complete the improvements to their side of that road. I do not know if they've completed them yet, but they are, they're out there working on them. So, that's the proposal with this preliminary subdivision plan. Again, new, no new lots are created, we're just, we're just plating and dedicating some road, and staff recommending approval with the basic conditions listed in your staff report. If you have any questions, happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, Andrew. Any questions for this subdivision plan? If not, this one also does not require a public hearing, it just is up to us to take action on it. Someone want to make a motion to do so?
Chair, I move we approve the preliminary subdivision plan request by Michael Garcia, representing the Tuilla County School District for the Deseret Peak High School subdivision, application number 23-1077, based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report dated July 17th.
I'll second.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Hamilton. Any discussion? If not, we'll take it to a vote. Commissioner Gossett.
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan.
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Aye.
Commissioner Jensen.
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Chair also votes aye. That preliminary subdivision plan is approved, seven to zero. Next, our city council reports. Councilmember Manzio, welcome, and it's all yours.
Thanks. Thanks for being here tonight. I have just a couple of things from our last meeting. In our work meeting, we discussed the water element that you just discussed tonight, so thank you for, for bringing a positive recommendation on that. Well, I think we'll see that at our next meeting for approval. I guess we're not, but probably approval. And then, we discussed a very preliminary discussion with the chief of police about parking where there's no curb on the city and maybe amending that code. It's very preliminary, so we'll see what happens, and that I'll eventually probably get to as well. And then, in our business meeting, a couple of things I would just point out, we did approve the ordinance that you had at your last meeting about the twin homes, the lot lines with zero lot line in the middle of the twin homes, and we approved a contract to do some test wells so that we can keep our water flowing here. And we approved an agreement with UDOT to, there's been that temporary light at 600 West and SR 112 for quite a while, and it needs to be permanent, but it's taken a long time. So, we approved an agreement with them to get things moving along. It'll probably be a little while, but we still get moving along towards a permanent light and some road improvements. And that's all I have to report. Anything, any questions for me?
That parking ordinance is going to be a lot of fun.
It is going to be a lot of fun.
Because we have 37 different widths of streets.
Right, which is why it's very preliminary.
Yeah. I looked at that, and so I'm really glad I'm not in charge of that one.
All right. Thank you so much.
Next, the review and decision on the minutes for the meeting held on July 9th, 2025. Any edits, corrections, fixes to the minutes? If not, I will make a motion that we approve the minutes for the meeting held on July 9th, 2025.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hamilton. Any discussion on that? If not, we'll take it to a vote. Commissioner Gossett.
Aye.
Commissioner Proctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Sloan.